When you talk about the most important thing, it is water, water, water. You know, water, whiskeys for drinking waters for fighting over, and that remains true to this day. Know what your county commissioners do. I think that was the number one comment is that when I started running for office, no one really knew what a county commissioner did. If they know we're having good governance, I think it's the, you can tell by the level of frustration. And if they're complaining about something, if they feel like they actually can come to and complain, I consider that success. Most people will sit back and yell at the TV or the radio. Even though I love the temperament of Ronald Reagan, the temperament that probably fits better than the one I quote more often is Winston Churchill. He's a bulldog and I really appreciate the directness. And at the end of the day, this isn't about feelings, it's about getting results. So I tend to kind of lean more that way, but I try to be charming like Reagan.
Welcome to the Good Government Show. I'm your host, Dave Martin. On this episode, we're talking with Yakima County, Washington County Commissioner Amanda McKinney. And we talk apples, Cosmic Crisps. That's the newest and some say best apple. If you like a good apple pie or to make a charcuterie plate, be prepared to take notes. You know, Washington apples, it's apple country. We recorded this conversation in the fall, so most of what was being harvested then is probably already on your table. Yakima County is farm country, so we talk agriculture and wine, Washington wine. Try some. I did. We also talk about community engagement and how to listen to the people. So join me after the break and listen to what Amanda McKinney has to say about wine and local agriculture. That's coming up. The Good Government Show is sponsored by OurCo. That means our community. OurCo has found a way to make government more effective. OurCo provides the OUR platform. And this is an app that blends in person and digital interactions to connect people with their government, their county, their town, their state. The OurCo app transforms meaningful conversations into reliable data. They can turn results into projects and programs the community has essentially already approved. It's sort of like a flash poll by phone, but without the call and in real time. And wherever community members are, maybe they're at their house or their office or where they're out just talking about local issues. Maybe the choices between putting in more local buses or expanding the bike lanes. OurCo can get you an answer immediately. With OUR, you can engage your citizens or any group. Learn what they want and build programs and policies that advance your county, your job creators, your constituents. So visit OurCo.com, that's O-U-R-C-O dot com and learn how they do it. And while you're there, book a demonstration. Welcome to the Good Government Show. Today I have a guest with me from the state of Washington. So if you could introduce yourself, tell us where you're from and what your title is.
Absolutely. Well, Amanda McKinney, I'm a Yakima County Commissioner from Washington State. We're on the sunny side, east of the Cascades.
The sunny side.
The sunny side. And I usually say sunny and sane side. We're just about getting solutions with little resources. We like to.
We like solutions on the Good Government Show?
Solutions oriented, but we are highly ag. So our county specifically grows apples and hops and grapes, wine grapes.
All right, let's talk. Yeah. Washington apples.
Ah, yes.
What are the best apples?
Okay. Well, you and I had the privilege of speaking earlier, but we've got to talk about the Cosmic Crisp. So the Cosmic Crisp is all the rage. They are sweet and tart and crispy. But the most important thing about them, if you like charcuterie boards or fondue, you can slice these apples and they will not brown. So you can do your work in advance of your guests coming over and get it all laid out. And so you, you can absolutely recognize one from afar. And I highly recommend anyone who wants to do their work ahead of time and be efficient. Cosmic Crisp.
Is this a new apple variety?
Yes, it is.
How old are they?
Well, they take some time to design. And so this is, I think, the second year they've been on the market.
Oh, really?
And Washington State University helps develop these in partnership with our growers. And so you won't be able to grow Cosmic Crisps if you are outside of Washington for about 10 more years.
So you're holding on.
Well, we're smart. We do designer apples and then after a while, we do let the rest of the market across the US.
You let the rest of the world? Okay.
Yeah.
Macintosh, Fuji apples, any of these?
Fugees, now Macintosh, my favorite apple, by the way. But a Macintosh does not ship and pack well, which is why it's usually on your backyard tree that you would have on the back 40, as it were. And you would pick that and make applesauce and eat it fresh, but it doesn't shelf life and gets pretty mushy.
So if you're making apple pie, what do you use?
I actually use Granny Smith's. Yes, I do because, yes. And I'm a big fan of adding a little bit of caramel too, because if you're going to eat it, you, I'm, go big, go big.
Do you always have apples at your house? I mean, is.
Yes, absolutely. It's Washington. It's always on the counter.
Is it, is it really, I mean, you know, you, Washington and apples are sort of synonymous together.
Absolutely.
Is this, are they growing apples all over the state?
Not all over the state. Where the sun usually shines is where we do it.
And you're on the sunny side.
I'm on the sunny side. Yeah.
What other apples are you growing in Washington?
Oh gosh, Galas, Honeycrisp are very popular. And you know, it really, really is a lot of designer apples. Pink Ladies are also a really delicious one.
Designer apples?
Designer apples. Well, we designed them. So a lot of folks probably don't know this. They actually can store for a year in cold storage.
Okay.
And this is really incredible because it helps us with supply chain issues and pricing. And we can make sure that we are only entering the market at good times. But it helps with schools, rural schools across the US. We also have something called the Rocket Apple, and you might've seen that on the store shelves. Rocket apples are awesome for little kiddos for schools. They're like the size of a, you know, the little tangerine, mandarin oranges, real small. But how many mothers out there, you give your child an apple and they take, you know, four bites and then they leave it there. So the Rocket Apple is designed to be just fit in the, in the palm of a 10-year-old child perfectly. And they eat it and it's gone. And then you don't have to waste the rest.
So do you come from a farming apple growing background?
Yes, I do. Yes. My family actually farmed for pears and apples and Timothy Hay and alfalfa. Yes.
So you've been picking apples and eating them off the tree?
Well, I grew up in Cherry Town. So I grew up in beautiful sunny The Dells, Oregon, which is a beautiful city right on the Columbia River and the gorge there between Oregon and Washington. And we are Cherry City, USA there. Now, we have to differentiate too. These are eating cherries. So I don't want to upset anyone listening who might be somewhere else where there's tart cherries. Yes, but we grow beautiful Bing cherries. Some of them are just so deep dark red and you bite into those.
When I buy those cherries in a bag at the grocery store?
That is Washington, absolute Washington and some Northern Oregon. Yes.
So you've been, this is something that this culture of agriculture is something you've been immersed in.
Absolutely.
Your whole life.
Yes.
Do you grow, do you have a farm or any kind of like?
No, my grandparents actually now had just, their home had a couple of, a small orchard there. But on my, my husband's side of the family, actually, in the beautiful Yakima Valley where we live, his family were one of the first settlers to come in and actually start planting hops and apples. And there is still a family farm working today and operating.
Now, complete disclosure, we had dinner last night.
Yes.
Some other Washington folks, and you turned up your nose at the wide list. So tell me about Washington wine.
I am always, it's remarkable to me where you go and there are very few Washington wines on menus. And, and Washington actually has more wines rated higher than California. And so I always like to talk about Washington wine. And so if you don't, if you aren't familiar with Washington wine, go to your, your local wine shop and absolutely demand it because you don't know what you're missing.
So what do you, what do you, what's the last Washington wine you opened?
Oh gosh, well, there's some really, really nice ones. And they can be quite spending, I will say, but they're worth it. But you know, you've got Bledsoe. I don't know if anyone knows Drew Bledsoe and knows the name, football. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's got a beautiful winery in eastern Washington, but there are so many local wines that are out there. And it's really fantastic to get year to year differences. And I really like that.
Is it more reds or whites or?
We have all, we have all. We don't do as much as the, you know, the, the Chardonnays as much, but lots of Rieslings, white blends. But there are reds, the beautiful reds that come out. There's Cab Franc. You're going to have the Cab Sauv. You're going to have Merlot. Just gorgeous, gorgeous Washington wines.
And you said, I think Yakima was the largest ag producer in the state?
Yes, Yakima County, number one ag producer. We have about $10 billion in ag production that comes out of Washington State. And the Yakima basin produces just shy of half of that, $5 billion. And it's mostly apples, hops, wine grapes. We also grow, and this is a fun fact, we grow more mint. So when you have toothpaste and you're thinking of brushing your teeth, I hope.
I was thinking more mint ice cream.
Yeah, no, it's toothpaste actually. So the Yakima Valley grows an awful lot of mint that goes in toothpaste.
Really?
Yeah.
Why toothpaste?
I have no idea. I should know the answer to that question. Probably because.
Cause I, honestly, my first thought was mint ice cream.
Because it's a consistent supply. So if you're going to, if you're going to sell mint, it probably was a stroke of genius to try to get toothpaste companies to take on the mint flavor.
And you said hops several times?
Hops, hops, hops. You know, I always say, we're from, if you want to visit the Yakima Valley, we grow your apples, we grow your beer, we grow your wine.
Where do the hops go?
Where do they go?
Yes.
Oh, all over the world. In fact, we produce more hops than even Belgium now. So.
Really?
And really it's, it's gotten to be just like apples where there's designer hop varieties now. And if you go out to your local breweries, you might have a local brewery, but they're probably getting their hops from the Yakima Valley. And they come and visit and they, I mean, the amount of aromatics that, and the thought that goes into it. But they will design hops to come up with a flavor that is, is requested by a brewery.
Okay. So with all of this agriculture, what are the big challenges?
It's beautiful to live there.
I'm sure. What are the challenges as a county commissioner? What are the challenges you have in your county?
Oh gosh. Well, particularly in our state, our state unfortunately has been not as conducive environment, not created conducive environment from ag. And I think we're seeing this across the nation with inflationary costs. But we have a strong pursuit of some real, some real quote, green energy restrictions that are coming down on our producers and growers. It makes it very hard for them to operate. Water treatment, labor obviously is something that is hugely critical. Specifically for us, we rely on migrant workers. We actually, Washington State utilizes 30% of the H2A workers that are coming into the country. And our valley specifically up and down, you might have 45,000 people working in central and eastern Washington alone during our growing seasons. And that is reliable workforce that we need to get more reliability in.
All right. You say, you talked about the restrictions. What are you doing to help?
Advocating for the passing of our farm bill is really important because in there we talk about reforming H2A. It is incredibly important for us to discuss conversion for all of the heavy equipment to electric. The technology isn't there. The technology is absolutely not there and it is, it is not there. It is not feasible and it's not financially feasible for small operators to consider going out and buying some kind of an electric, electric battery operated swather. You know, these are the types of things.
What's a swather?
That's hay. It cuts.
I'm from Brooklyn. I don't, I don't, you know, farms? No, not me.
Well, let me tell you, swathers have come a long way since I started driving one, but you know, the biggest.
You've driven swathers?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Bale hay, all those things. They, they used to come with a cup holder, which was the bells and whistles, but these things are GPS locate now. And you can set it and forget it for the most part. And probably someone could listen to your podcast while they were.
That would be good. Roger Swather, listen to the show. Good. All right. We like that.
But I think it's really bringing clarity to our state and federal representatives about what is the actual ability for people to implement. It's one thing to say, great, we want to have electric operated vehicles and farm equipment, but the technology truly isn't there. And you are not able to, if it isn't reliable, we aren't going to use it. If you have to get a crop off the field, off the tree, you have a very condensed timeline. Weather is always something, not only weather, but labor. We don't have time to wait for something to charge or it's not going to even last on a charge. You have people who are working 24-hour day operations and they don't have time for unreliability because that costs money. And we have got to get the fruit off the trees.
You have, yes, in a timely fashion.
In a timely fashion.
What else is going on in Yakima?
Well, right now we're preparing for the end of harvest. So the last bit of Honeycrisp are being picked right now. Yeah. And the wine grapes are coming off. And honestly, what we've been really doing is focusing on, instead of using seasonal workers are really trying to keep people in the community and working year round. And so finding ways to help have them work on the farm to keep them year round is really important. Broadband, I would say is massively important too. We're, we're trying to use ways to have technology be out in the fields. You'd be really surprised to learn how much technology has really impacted product and productivity.
How are you helping to get broadband expanded?
Well, what was really critical for us is when we had our ARPA dollars come in. I'm, I'm a new youngish commissioner, I'll say.
You're pretty young.
Well, I think it was really important for me seeing, growing up and seeing technology kind of pass by rural America. I really put a value on that and have young children in school and seeing them utilize iPads and knowing that we need to have that same technology out in the field, especially when we're talking about moisture content. We're really trying to, to grow better products and, and be more efficient. And that, we have to have technology to do that. And so we've got these great universities who are coming up with it.
I would imagine especially if you're genetically altering the fruit to get it, make it better.
Yes. Well, and it's, it's growing. And unfortunately, we also have to deal with drought conditions. So for me, most critically is working on water resources. And I know that there are a lot of people right now in the US who are working and farming. And you'll nod your head up and down right now when you talk about the most important thing. It is water, water, water. You know, water, whiskeys for drinking waters for fighting over, and that remains true to this day. And it doesn't seem that we're getting as much of it in the form of snowpack. And in our particular case in Yakima, our, our water is actually strictly comes from snowpack. And so when the snowpack is not as it once was or coming in the form of snow and the runoff is coming at a different time, we need to be able to capture that. So water storage for us is a critical component to how we're going to survive and continue to feed the nation.
You said, youngish county commissioner. How long have you been a county commissioner?
This is my third year.
Third year?
Yeah.
First, first election?
Yeah. Well, not technically, but I won't go into it. I had to do two elections to get where I am, but yes, yeah. Two elections in three years.
You lost twice and then got rid of the brother?
No, no, I only win.
Okay. All right. Okay. What were you doing professionally before you?
I have actually been in real estate finance.
Okay.
Yeah. So my family, of course, farming family background and my father actually was in law enforcement.
All right.
But for me, I've been involved in real estate finance and, and really that was the, our, again, our driving economy has always been ag. And it's been very clear. Did a lot of philanthropic volunteerism through local service clubs. And really just wanted to get involved and bring kind of that business, that young professional sense to the county commissioners board. I think a lot of folks.
Are you the youngest on the board?
I am not now.
You're not?
No, no. And a lady never reveals, but I will say that as of the last election, I am no longer the youngest on the commissioners board. But definitely I'm second woman.
Do you look down at her and say, hey kid?
He's he.
Oh, he's a, sorry. Even better?
Yes, I do sometimes, but he's lovely. Yeah.
What would you say to, to younger people about getting involved in county government or government in general?
Know what your county commissioners do. I think that was the number one comment is that when I started running for office, no one really knew what a county commissioner did. What's interesting to me, absolutely. Yes. But that was, I think I had a little more inclination to know and understand because I was involved in permitting, planning, real estate, water.
What surprised you about the job when you took it?
Oh.
That you weren't quite ready for?
Oh gosh, no. I think what surprised me is how well I was prepared to do the job because of my career. I really actually anticipated that there would be a lot more difficulty in the uptake and that was not the case.
All right.
Yeah. So it allowed me to be more proactive than I anticipated I would be.
Well, that's a good benefit certainly.
Yeah.
All right. We have a questionnaire. We're going to go through that now.
Let's do it.
This is, that was the easy part.
My favorite color is blue.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you know what? Not quite. All right. So you're a county commissioner, three years in. From where you sit on the Yakima County Commission, define good government.
Ooh, one that actually has results that the people ask for. I think that's the biggest thing is sometimes you get people in room and they assume what the public actually wants. And so I do a very good job of going out and actually talking to people to where they are. So I try to spend as little time in the office and I think a lot of people would do well to do the same thing.
How do you judge your success or your lack of success?
The grocery store aisle. Yep. If I get stopped on the grocery store aisle and if it is a thank you for what you do or thumbs up, you're on the right track, which is what I get a lot of, then I know I'm on the right track.
Do you go to the same grocery store or do you mix it up?
I actually do. I'm a creature habit. I do go to the same grocery store, but I will say.
How long does it take you to do your grocery shopping?
Well, it does take some time. In fact, there will be times where my husband, when he hears this will laugh is that if I just need one more thing for the dinner pot, he'll say, let me go please, because I want to eat today. But no, it's my favorite pulse check is to go to the grocery store aisle. And if, and I will frequently get stopped multiple times going down different aisles.
Do you mind?
No, I love it. I actually, that is how I know. Number one is, am I being public enough? Am I out there educating enough? I always take the opportunity whenever possible to proactively speak on radio and television and using social media and going out to people's places of businesses and going out as much as possible to talk about, hey, you tell me. I like to ask a lot of questions. How are things going? How do you feel about the state of things right now? Is there something I can do for you? I frequently give out my cell phone number, which I think is something that most commissioners kind of, you know, had protected their time. It is the highest form of community service that I can think of. And so there's 25 hours a day as far as I can tell.
Do you sometimes have to go, oh no, I have to change out of my sweatpants and take off my hat?
No, in fact, I, well, and I like to be whatever I'm dressed in. It doesn't matter. I mean, you're a part of the community and really I think that was the benefit of not being in public office. I've only been a member of the community and been able to really walk with the folks who are on the receiving end of these policy decisions.
So how do the people know, your constituents, your voters, your citizens, how do they know if they're getting good government? And, and how should they hold you accountable if, if they're not?
They, they, if they know we're, we're having good governance, I think it's the, you can tell by the level of frustration. And if they're complaining about something, if they feel like they actually can come to and complain, I consider that success. Most people will sit back and yell at the TV or the radio, but they don't.
Post something nasty on social media.
I think what I learned right away is that by making myself accessible, that is absolutely the most critical thing. People want to know that they can access you and that you will pick up their phone call and hear them. Come to their place of business and listen to what their issue is. And then what's your follow-up?
Yeah.
Actually having them be a part of the solution and following up.
So we're, you started down this, if they're not getting what they want or what they think they should be doing, what should they do?
Number one, tell me about it.
Yeah.
And then tell a whole bunch of other people about it so that I'm hearing it constantly. Nobody wants to have someone talking negatively. And for me, it is really critical. I care. I want people to be sitting in a room and my name is brought up and they say, she actually listens and she did something to help me. And if they're not saying that, then I'm not doing my job, which means I shouldn't be there.
Well, you've been there for three years. You'll be there for three more?
No, I've got, on this term, I've got three more years and then yeah, my, I've got, this is the first year of a four-year term. And I served two years of a previous four-year term and that's what I don't want to get into the weeds. But yeah, so three more years.
So as an elected official, you've, you've been at this for a few years now. What would you like people to know about how government works or doesn't work from an insider's perspective?
It is only as good as the public coming and being a part of actually reaching out. I've actually talked to other commissioners who haven't taken the time to talk to their city council members or commissioners who haven't gone upstream and talked to their local legislators or their congressional representatives. People want to hear from you. And I think unfortunately, in the absence of hearing from the public and hearing about those critical stories, then people will come up with their own solutions to a perceived problem. And very rarely does that go well. So, and I've, and I should say, I've been in real estate finance and I went through Dodd-Frank. I went through the financial crisis. What came of that was I think a whole lot of legislators trying to solve a problem without talking to the people who were actually involved. And, and you can tell, people can tell. So the best thing that anyone can do is actually, I would encourage you right now, figure out who your county commissioner is, get their phone number and ask to meet with them and sit down and tell them who you are and what you do. And, and make sure they know that because the more that you can have the general public interacting with your elected official, the better off we're all going to be.
Do you have a good relationship with the mayor of Yakima and the state representative, your state representatives or your congressperson?
Absolutely. It is so critical. We've, we've got a wonderful council of governments in the Yakima Valley. And of course, on three, we have three commissioners on our board and we kind of divide and conquer and sit on different seats of committees and boards. But it is critical to be able to work, and I'm going to say the word, across party lines. Because in my state particularly, we have a super majority party that is not the party that I am involved in. And, and that, that is something that of course, we're going to get hammered and we do get hammered. But what I will say is that it is important though, to still draw the line to overall what impacts my community specifically, does impact the bottom line of the state. So at the end of the day, if they want to be successful as a state group of legislators, they should still pay attention to the needs of the people who are maybe not in the majority. But we are feeding you. So it would be a good idea for you to listen to us when we're telling you that the things that you're doing are making it harder for us to feed you.
I think one of the things that I keep hearing from many county commissioners is it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican. It's that pothole in my street is just has no political party. Fix it.
It's not, for, for me, we're, it's not the pothole. It's dust, dust abatement from gravel roads. But I think more importantly, and this is critical, most county commissioners, you know, your state legislator, legislatures might have the ability to dip into, you know, reserve funds or they can go out and find a pot of money and might have surplus dollars. The reason why county commissioners typically, and why NACO specifically, our association gets along so well, whether or not you're Republican or Democrat, is because it is about balanced budgets. At the end of the day, we actually have to balance our budget. We can go bankrupt. And that is a looming issue that nobody wants to have, right? It doesn't matter. People aren't going to care what letter is behind your name if you bankrupt your county.
Yes.
And I think the other thing too, is that, you know, county government is so localized that it's easy for us all to say, ugh, government, you know, those government workers. But when you're talking.
We never say that on the Good Government Show.
Well, but you know what? I like to remind people that the people who are actually implementing the policies of the, of the legislative body that, that gave them the directive, those are your neighbors, those are your family, those are your friends. They're actually likely working for, for some sort of government agency. You know, think about it from, you know, a one-on-one, humanize it, right? These are people who are following out what they've been directed to do. But what I would encourage folks to do is if you do work inside government, really tell your superiors that you're not getting good reception to the policies. And I think that's one thing that's lacking is we do have an issue where federal agencies or state agencies employ people. And there's this adherence to a change in policy depending upon an administrative change from up top. But they don't feel comfortable talking to their, their peers or saying, you know, this is actually really working, I think, the way that it should be. So I would really encourage anyone working in government to have candid conversations. Because if, if the food chain is only talking about, oh, this is great, implementation's great, everybody loves it on the ground. Those legislators are going to hear back and they're going to say, well, yeah, that's success. So if something isn't going well, I would encourage anyone to talk about it up the food chain.
All right.
Honesty is the best policy.
Who is your political hero? Did someone inspire you to get involved?
Oh my gosh, I wrote to Ronald Reagan when I was eight years old. Yeah. But I would say, you can ask my husband, even though I love the temperament of Ronald Reagan, the temperament that probably fits better than the one I quote more often is Winston Churchill. He's a bulldog and I really appreciate the directness. And at the end of the day, this isn't about feelings. It's about getting results. So I tend to kind of lean more that way, but I try to be charming like Reagan.
No one has said Winston Churchill to the answer to that question. You are the first.
Oh gosh, I just adore him.
All right. Well, growing up, did you want to be Winston Churchill or did you want to be the president? Did you want to be governor of your state?
No, absolutely not. No, no. Only wanted to be, I wanted to be very independent. Which shouldn't strike anyone who knows me as odd. I have a problem with superiority, not authority, superiority. I really kind of thumb my nose at anyone who thinks that they are more superior. And I think that I'm trying to, I like hard work.
You said your husband was home being Mr. Mom.
He's amazing. He's fantastic. You know, he, he, he's a true partner. And I think, I like that. I'm a female. I'm a mother. I'm a woman. I believe that women should be women. We can do all of these things, but I like to have a man who can also take care of me. I like that traditional role. So right now he's taking care of me by allowing me to live out this dream and serve my community and be here away from home for a week. And, and he's back at home making sure the kids get to school and that lunches are made and hopefully it's not a Halloween candy, honey. You gotta check the box. Make sure it's not all recessed.
Were you president of your, of your high school class or anything like that?
I was in, I was in leadership. Yes. Yeah. I did go back to DC and there was a youth leadership conference and I was voted to be Secretary of State. And I, I do recall some of those things, but yeah, yeah.
All right. Did you have a, did you come from a political family?
No, no, no.
Who encouraged you to write to Reagan when you were eight?
I just did that on my own. Yeah. And he wrote me back too. I mean, sure, it was a, you know, the stamped signature, but oh my gosh, I just thought that was the greatest thing. No, well, gosh, I love you, my sister, but I think my sister and I got in an argument. I think she tore it up. But that's what siblings do to show their love, right?
All right. So we've talked about a few things out in your, in Yakima County in Washington. I have never been there. I'm going to come out.
You're going to come.
I'm going to come. I'm going to visit. What are we having? What's your favorite local dish? What are you serving? What are we, where are we going?
Oh gosh, well, we.
And we can start with that. We can finish with apple pie certainly, but you know, what else?
Well, we, because we have so much produce, we have incredible restaurants. And I will say, and I talked to, with you about this last night, one of my favorite places to eat is Raleigh's Taco Bus, which is just around the corner. And it is, it's actually a bus, but we have incredible, incredible food. We have a Mexican-American community like none other. We are very proud of it. Most of our migrant workers who came in and decided to actually settle year round. Our community is now over 50% of our population has a Mexican heritage. So we, it will definitely include a lot of fantastic, incredible Mexican food.
What do you love? What's your favorite thing?
Oh gosh, carnitasada. I mean, I don't discriminate, but I will say this, I love hot spicy salsa. I drench it. It is, if it doesn't make my eyes water and my nose run, I, you know.
Which goes back to the hops because you'll need a beer with that.
Yeah, exactly, or a glass of milk sometimes. Yeah, yeah. So that's what, and we would absolutely have to have a lot of local varieties of beers and there's a lot of great places that you do. And some of our producers actually have taprooms where they will use their experimentals and you can walk in and actually, just like wine tasting, you can, you can do that also. But we've got incredible, incredible restaurants with fresh produce as well.
And who makes the best apple pie?
I do. No, any, the best apple pie is anyone made in your own home. Absolutely, I live by that because when it's fresh out of the oven, but we have a lot of great bakeries too.
All right, this is the Good Government Show, we always bring it back to good government. So tell me about a good government project you've worked on in your last few years as a county commissioner.
Very, very, very involved in something called the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan. And this is something that shows it, good governance is one that hopefully can continue to have good governance beyond the people who are acting it out. We, as I expressed a little earlier, we have really intense water needs. And so working on in-stream flow for fish, in, in storing water for conservation for our irrigators.
How's your fishing there?
Fishing, well, we, we do not have, we're not where we want to be with our salmon population for sustainability, but you can fish and my gosh, we have the most incredible fly fishing. If you've never been out to the Pacific Northwest to fish for salmon, you are missing out. So please, absolutely, you can come visit us for that, but.
Do you do that?
I, I don't fly fish, no, but I'm more of a mountaineer. I like to hike and do overnight trips out in the mountains, absolutely, yeah. But you gotta watch out for bears and make sure you're packing, yeah.
Watch out for bears.
No, I think the, but the strongest policy has been to continue to advocate for, for, for me, not having our water rights leave our basin specifically and making sure, advocating for funding from state and federal government for increased storage. We have to store our water, as I discussed earlier, it's, it's coming down in different forms and it's leaving our community and we need to make sure that we're storing it. So we have enough for municipal use, so that we have enough for our irrigators and we definitely want to care about our environment.
Was water something you dealt with before you became a county commissioner?
In some form because of real estate, yeah. Water issues, so there are certain areas where we have parts of our basin where we were not able to actually issue building permits because of lack of access for water. I don't want to, we could talk for hours on water issues and I don't want to get too technical. But yes, I did have a heightened awareness of it and it was also something, we had something in our, our community called the Aquavella, which was an intense court case that lasted over 40 years. And so I would frequently have title reports come back and a lot of out of state underwriters would look at it and go, oh my gosh, we can't lend on this property. It's got this, you know, a line item on this title report. And I would say, oh, don't worry about it, it's been there for 40 years and it's on every single title of every parcel. So yeah, very intensely aware of water issues. And of course, with my family and farming, this has always been something. I grew up when we used to flood the field. And at that time, you know, now I look at that and it makes my, ugh, it gives me heart pains thinking of it. And there are some places that will still flood fields, but we do drip irrigation and we're very, very intense on our water conservation.
You'd said you had small children, how old?
Yeah, so I have a 20-year-old daughter and a 10-year-old son.
All right, did you send them out to work on the farm just so they could?
You know, we, my husband and I have talked about this, that we think it would be very good. He, his first job was arching hops and mine was.
I'm sorry, arching?
Arching hops.
And what, what is that?
Okay, so hops are vines and so they, they grow up and the vines hang down. And so the arching would be to, we put them in rows and they would actually physically work to tie them around the vine that grows across, so they would create, yes.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have a top cutter and a bottom cutter and I could really talk to you about all of those. It's scary looking equipment, but it's, it's really good.
So are you going to send your boy out to?
Yes, he's gonna go out, he's gonna go out, Black Star Ranch, he's gonna go out, he's gonna have to do it.
Amanda McKenney of Yakima County, Washington, it is a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and Cosmic Crisp.
Cosmic Crisp, remember, that's the win for the charcuterie, you gotta go for the Cosmic Crisp.
Well, I like a good charcuterie and you have to have that apple or it's.
Absolutely.
Fresh fruit, that's the one, Cosmic Crisp. Thank you for being on the show.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. What is it that county government does? That's the question county commissioners get asked the most and the simple answer is everything. On the Good Government Show, we're so lucky to have talked with so many county commissioners and other county officials that have shown us how effective county government is. County government dates back to, get this, 1634, making it one of the oldest forms of government in the United States.[1635.48]